Hi, I'm Steve Herr, Executive Director of Cooper Square Committee. And I know we still have more people coming in. But it's just great to see such a big crowd for this event. It's just really impressive how people are so engaged and are coming out for this forum. We are expecting the candidates to show up shortly there at another forum actually before this one. And it's not that far away, but they just have to get over here. But before we start, I just wanted briefly, you know, and I'm sure many of you know this already, just give you a very brief overview of what the City Council does and what its powers are. And then we'll, I'll let Andrew give you an overview. Andrew Berman from the Greenwich Village Society for a Corporation will talk about the format of this event. And then we'll hopefully have the candidates here by then. So first of all, as you probably know, there are 51 members of the City Council. And among their powers are, you know, working with the mayor to pass the city's budget. The city's budget is close to $85 billion a year. It funds all the city agencies. It also funds a lot of contracts with private entities, including non-profit organizations like the ones here sponsoring this forum. It also, the City Council works on land use issues. They vote on zoning approvals. They voted on a couple of little things affecting this community over the last decade. They also vote on disposition of city-owned land. It's known as U-LR applications. So whenever the city is selling city-owned properties, they have a say as to whether or not it gets sold to a particular entity. They also do oversight of the different agencies. They hold, they have different committees. They hold hearings on issues and the public has an opportunity to testify to this here. So there are committees that deal with housing and buildings, there's a variety of other committees, dozens of committees that they have. And finally, they pass legislation on a number of issues. And just recently, a couple of weeks ago, the City Council passed 11 bills that are reforming the Department of Buildings. It was a major effort by a lot of housing groups citywide. And they're trying to strengthen, to really strengthen tenant protections and occupied buildings where there's renovations that could be placed. So that's the role of the Council in a nutshell. Your role, also as the public, is, you know, to learn as much as you can about the different candidates and where they stand on the issues. We have a lot of issues at stake in this community right now. There's a lot of intense development pressures, you know, tenants are really under siege in many buildings in the neighborhood. And so we really want to know if they understand the issues and if they're going to fight for people in this community who don't want to see oversized development and residential neighborhoods being transformed dramatically. So having said that, I'd like to just also remind you to, the primary is on September 12th. Please, it's September 12th. Please get out and vote. Now I'd like to introduce Andrew Berman from Greenwich Village Society.
Good evening, everybody. What a great turnout. I hope you're as excited as I am to hear from the candidates tonight. So briefly, the format, we're going to have four of the candidates with us here tonight. There are six co-sponsoring organizations. Each of the candidates will get to make a brief opening statement talking about who they are, why they're running, and what they hope to do if elected to office. Then each of the co-sponsoring organizations will ask a couple of questions of the candidates that are important to our members and to the issues that we work around. And this is a themed candidate's forum tonight. We are focusing on issues of preservation and affordable housing. We hope that the questions that we ask are going to be ones that are important to you as well. We do expect that because of the number of candidates and the number of co-sponsoring organizations, it's going to be a long evening. Stay as long as you can. We had hoped that there would be an opportunity for audience questions. It's looking as though timing-wise, there may not be direct questions from the audience, but we're going to give you an opportunity and a way to reach out to each of the candidates directly if you do not find that the question that you want to ask is covered by the forum tonight. I will also mention that this is being videotaped by GBSHP and live broadcast on Facebook as we speak. So everything that the candidates say, if you didn't hear something, or you didn't say for the entire evening, or you want to share it with your friends, it is going to be up and available on our website, Facebook, and I'm sure some of the other co-sponsoring organizations will pick it up as well. So you'll be able to see in detail everything that the candidates have said. From here, each of the co-sponsoring organizations is just going to make a very brief, like one-minute statement about who we are and what we do. And hopefully by then, the candidates will have arrived from the prior forum and we'll get started with the questioning. I just want to ask everybody to be respectful. No interrupting of the candidates. We're here to give them a chance to answer. We are going to be keeping them tied. So we're going to make sure nobody overly dominates the audience. And there's not going to be, again, given the limitations of time, we're not going to have a back and forth with the candidates. We're going to ask them a question, we're going to give them an answer, and then, you know, there'll be other opportunities after this to follow up. So I guess we're going to now move into introductions from each of the co-sponsoring organizations. And since I'm here, I'll start. On behalf of the Greenwich Village Society for Historic Preservation, we're a membership-based organization. We've been around since 1980. We work hard to try to preserve the special character and history of Greenwich Village, the East Village, and NoHo, particularly around the issues of preserving historic buildings and affecting new development, protecting small businesses, cultural institutions, things of that nature. We have two items on everybody's chairs tonight. I hope you got them. One is this sign. It says, "Tech Hub Must Include Zoning Protections." If you believe that, we strongly encourage you to hold that up tonight so that the candidates can see it. I also want to let you know that everybody should have on their chair a copy of questionnaire which was sent to every one of the Council District Two candidates, the 10 questions that we asked them and their answers here in black and white. So again, if something isn't covered tonight, you have what they've said in response and these answers in writing here. You did the same thing for Council District One, and both of these are up and available on our website. The URL is on the handout. So that's us, and I will, I guess, turn it over to Cooper Square Committee to introduce yourselves. Thank you very much.
Hello again, Steve Herr, Cooper Square Committee. So our organization is primarily, we're a tenants' rights organization. We've been around for well over 50 years. We, every year, we organize dozens of tenant associations. We work with multi-bility coalitions. We've been working with tenants of Rafael Tolodano and tenants of Icon Realty and Kushner tenants, as well as with Promin's tenants. So we've gotten to see a lot of these sort of bad-acting landlords in the community who are really having a big impact. And we are, we're helping the tenants to fight that. We also have a senior program, which we've just gotten off the ground the last couple of years, which is working to grow a neighborhood and work to provide more services for seniors. We hope to get more information out about that to you people. And we also have a greening program that works with low-income co-op. So I hope there are some people here and some of the HDFCs in the community, so we can reach out to us. We have helped a lot of buildings to get weatherization assistance that pays for most of the cost of new windows, to new boilers for low-income building. And so basically, that's our work. We're also doing some development work. We are finishing up a building for homeless LGBT youth, known as the VR for Residents, which should be completed by the end of next month. So we look forward to announcing that and having room to cut in.
My name is Richard Moses. I'm with the Lower East Side Preservation Initiative. We're an all-von tier, non-profit organization that was formed in 2007, actually 10 years ago this month. So we're celebrating our anniversary, actually, in October. We're very happy and excited. We were working very hard on the two East Village districts, historic districts, that were passed a couple of years ago. One on Second Avenue and one on East 10th Street. We worked with GBSHP, HTC, EVCC, and our Alliance of Neighbors on that. And we're now working with the same groups again to expand those districts. And that's something that we're very concerned about because we feel that the East Village is kind of disappearing fast before our eyes. We are seeing more and more demolitions. And we're also working at the same time, because the Lower East Side traditionally included from 14th Street down to below Chinatown, we're working on a district around the tenement museum and the historic core of Chinatown as well. So we're excited about those initiatives. We don't have a tremendously preservation for the administration at this point, but we want to see what, you know, our candidates have to say about preservation and what their positions are. So thank you very much.
Hi, good evening. I'm Steve Coe, I'm the CEO of Community Access. We were started by a group of people, friends, relatives, and people who had been discharged from the state psychiatric hospital on Lord's Island. They started renting apartments in the East Village in 1974. This is our 43rd anniversary this month, actually. And we were renting apartments from tenant-run buildings that had been largely abandoned. We have hundreds of units of affordable housing now. Our model is to incorporate low-income families and singles and people with special needs. In this district, some notable projects, 250-80 Sports Street was the first project in the state for 50-unit project, 28 families, low-income families, and 22 people who have transitioned through housing programs that we run. In the early 2000s, we developed a building in partnership with Cooper Square Committee. So if you eat at Rosie's Restaurant, you are supporting Cooper Square Committee and Community Access and the 55 tenants who live upstairs. In 2013, also in the district on Second Avenue, a project that was featured in the New York Times yesterday talking about overburdening of the mental health hospitals, a rescue program that has gained international fame as an alternative to going to a hospital. People come to the state for five days and are restored and work with people who also been hospitalized. So it's a completely new way to talk about how to take care of people. So we're interested in the candidates' support of initiatives like this, as well as in interactions of the police with people with mental illness, which has been fought somewhat. And so we look forward to getting that done. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kelly Carroll. I'm the Director of Advocacy and Community Outreach with the Historic Districts Council or the HDC, involved in pairing tonight. We are the citywide advocate for New York's historic neighborhoods, so we work in all five boroughs. We work under three prongs, which is community outreach, advocacy, and education. Our community outreach is, we have a primary constituency of over 500 groups, including Lesby and Greenwich Village Society, who we've heard from, who are also on our board. Our educational programs, we do about one event per week, which are low-cost or free to the public. And our advocacy, we review every single public application to the Landmark's Preservation Commission every week, and we comment and testify directly to the commission on about half of those. So our work has really impacted. And we also, the East Village Lower East Side is near and dear to us because this is where we have our office space. So the changes in this neighborhood are very close to home. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Laura Sewell, a longtime resident of the East Village and District Two. And I'm transitioning into the new Executive Director position of EVCC. Forgive me, I don't have this memorized off the top of my head yet like everyone else. The EVCC works to recognize, support, sustain, the built-in cultural character of the East Village. We have long advocated for landmark preservation and protection of the Lower East Side. EVCC initiated and led the effort to landmark Old PS64, Chavez Albohio, working with neighbors, community groups, and elected officials to save this treasured community space from demolition and development as a high-risk town. The 111 block to contextual rezoning, championed by EVCC, that was approved by the City Council in 2008, gives us many of the protections that we do have today. EVCC continues to advocate for the creation and expansion of the East Village and Lower East Side Historic Districts to protect neighborhoods from inappropriate alteration, demolition, and out-of-scale development. The East Village is famous for a unique mixture of small businesses that keeps our neighborhood lively. And EVCC advocates for increased retail diversity and the availability of local services to local residents through these three key initiatives. We publish our annual Get Local Guide, which we have here tonight. We form the East Village Independent Merchants Association to support our local independent retailers, and our place at ABMA is now a merchant-led, self-sustaining organization. We advocate for formula retail zoning restrictions to limit the number of chain stores in the East Village. The CB3's Economic Development Committee is working with components of EVCC's 2015 Formula Retail Zoning Report as they consider East Village a special district. For the full report, see our website, evccnyc.org. And thank you for the opportunity to be here, to hear the views of the candidates on the neighborhood that we hold here. Thank you.
Okay, so my understanding is that the candidates are on their way from the other forum, and some of them have already arrived. So are any of them here?
We're here.
All right, so come on. Come on down. Are the other two candidates still in transit, I guess?
Jorge was here.
Is Jorge Vasquez here?
Mary Silver? Yes.
Well, what we can do, since we're still waiting to do it. All right, well, we all understand that you were at another forum just earlier, and that you probably haven't had dinner too. So we actually had prepared, we actually prepared some food that I thought was going to be delivered over to your tables. I'll have my staff go and bring down the plates of food. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so I'll just put it out there. You can help yourself if you want to sustain. So just to give you a little background, since you missed it, we did some introductions about our own organizations and the format of this event. We're going to go around with questions asked by people affiliated with our organizations, who'll be, in some cases, speaking from the audience. But first, we're going to give you each an opportunity to speak for a couple of minutes and tell us about yourselves. And while you're running for City Council, so you can start, decide, Ronnie, if you want to go first. The, oh, I'm sorry. We have, we have a wireless mic. Use that, or if you want.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ronnie Cho. I am running for City Council, District Two. It's really wonderful to be here with all of you tonight. Sorry, we're a little late. I'm running for office here in my neighborhood because I believe, as many of us in this room, that the Democratic Party, and more importantly, our neighborhood and our city, needs a new generation of leadership. I spent my career in public service. I've spent the better part of a decade serving President Barack Obama, starting from his campaign, his unlikely campaign, 2007, 2008, all the way through his historic presidency. I've worked on big policy issues, Affordable Care Act, to implementation of the Affordable Care Act, cultural affordability, climate change, big public policies. I want to draw from that experience and implement that into city government. I believe local government is the most exciting place in American politics. Because if we're not going to be able to fight against Trump at national level, we don't have a lot of power up there. We've got to defend our neighborhood, block by block, here and there. We need a new generation of leadership to be able to, you know, who has the experience fighting those big battles to win and deliver for people in our neighborhood. I spend my time in, I live on Avenue C, because I can shoot in Avenue C. And I came to this neighborhood as soon as I left DC because I knew this is the place that I wanted. There is a family. I wanted to grow old and spend the rest of my life here. And that's why I'm committing myself to give all the talents and passions that I have to serve my neighborhood, make sure that we're protecting and preserving the character of our neighborhood. This place remains diverse and vibrant, and punk rock has always been. We need to do that. Can't expect a different outcome with the same approach. I'm asking you to vote for Ronnie Cho if you believe that we can and need to do better for our neighbors. But I'm the candidate for you. I'm asking you for your vote on September 12th. Thank you.
Can I cross one candidate with you?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Carlina Rivera, and I'm so thankful that you all chose to spend your Thursday evening with us because you are engaged and you care and you want to make the decision that is so, so important to us. It's putting a leadership, a leader in this position who truly knows the district, who cares about the issues, and is going to be effective from day one. So what makes me unique is I have a tremendous amount of experience, even working with some of the people in this room, on so many different issues. On affordable housing, on healthcare, on preserving our open spaces and community gardens, on education, on preserving small businesses. These issues are important to me, and we have been successful in fighting them together because I also bring the perspective of living and breathing them. I am born and raised in this neighborhood, and I am a proud product of District Two and the Lower East Side. So I'm just a humble person from Stanton Street who grew up, single mom, raised two girls, proud union member in affordable housing, Project Base Section Eight. So when we talk about affordable housing, we have to talk about every single bit of it. We have to talk about Project Base Section Eight, the 10,000 units of public housing that we have in this district, HDFCs, Michalamas, and making sure that we're protecting our homeowners. So we have a lot of issues we need to cover. I'm going all in on housing because just in this very room last night, you were here honoring a pioneer. And that's what this community is. It has a history and a legacy of pioneers, and I plan on continuing that tradition. I plan on fighting for what's right and doing so with all of you as the next City Councilwoman for District Two. Thank you so much.
Thank you for being here. I'm Mary Silver. Yes! Let's not think I have no village chops. I'm looking at a woman that I was in a PhD program with about 20 years ago, and I am creeping right now. That is great to see you here tonight. I do have a PhD JD from NYU. I've lived in the Village a long, long time. Lived in this district for 25 years. I have three amazing daughters, all raised in New York City public schools. The youngest just graduated from LaGuardia, off to college in September, the day after the primaries. So please make sure I win so that I can go off to with my daughter and get her settled. My political education really started in the schoolyard. When my daughter was a kindergartner, she experienced $200,000 in budget cuts. And I knew I had to jump in. I went from class mom to PTA president to the school board, to the community board, focusing on housing, homelessness, human rights, as well as on the advisory board of the 30th Street Men's Shelter, the largest shelter in the country. Actually, it was the catalyst for that advisory board. Now 350 of those men are fully employed. And we're really extraordinary. And I give that credit to the community. I believe in community-based solutions. That's how things get done in our neighborhood. You've all been taking care of your neighborhoods for many, many years. That's why New York City is an extraordinary place. And frankly, that's the kind of work and that's the kind of solutions that I want to bring to the City Council. You can operate from 30,000 feet or you can operate on the ground and make things done because you walk these streets and you make a difference. Over the course of 25 years, I've raised three to four million dollars for public schools, found new sites for public schools, worked with many people in their 80s who are being pushed out of their homes, tenant harassment is rampant. We have a humanitarian crisis, crisis, in terms of displacement in our council district right now. Thank you all for being here.
My name is Jorge Vasquez, and I'm ready to be your next City Councilperson. I'm born and raised in the district. I'm born and raised in NYCHA, and I'm a proud product of the public school education throughout my career. In fact, the first time I went to a private school was law school, right? Like, I went to PS188, Junior High School 56, and then I went to the high school fashion industry, where I learned my creativity that inspired me and allowed me to realize we need to bring back the arts in education, right? After graduate school, I was a council within New York City Public Schools, and I realized that our education system is failing. And the only way they listen to you is if you have letters behind your name. It didn't matter that I understood that children who had an individual educational program, IP, that they passed to state regents, you know, it didn't matter that I accept that. They still want their remedial math for this student, right? It was like, are you an attorney? No. So because you're not an attorney, we're not going to listen to you, right? And it's this advocacy that I learned, and I learned as a proud product of the Lower East Side. I learned that at an early age, I learned that the importance of community is putting yourself on the back end and making sure you put others before you put, before your self. And that's really what I think we want from our next City Councilmember. We want someone who's going to listen, but someone who's going to be effective, someone who understands the effect of poorly breaking legislation. And I know this effect because I've argued before judges. I know what happens when City Council passes legislation and it's poorly broken, right? But I also understand that we have healing to do here in the district. We all feel a big divide. A housing market is in a crisis. That average income that you need to move into this district is $140,000 to qualify for a new apartment. That's unacceptable. We made this community vibrant. We made this community great. This community produced me, it produced Carlina, it produced many other people, right? So we know that we're the products of what happens when the community stays together. And for that, vote Jorge Vasquez, September 12th. Thank you.
I'm Steve Coe from Community Access. Charlotte, you want to call her Rabenowitz as our advocacy coordinator?
Yeah. So briefly, Community Access is a 44-year-old nonprofit that helps people with mental health concerns, who do mixed housing, people with mental health concerns, helping families. I think about 1,300 units. And at the community board meetings, especially the ones in the Bronx, we often hear it's the elected officials who will say, you know, mentally ill people are violent, or what about the children, they're predators. So this is my question to you. How do you feel about supportive housing for people with mental health concerns? And how would you, as an elected official, allay the community concerns about supportive housing in your district?
That's a great question. Thank you. I think mental health is a critical issue that's oftentimes stigmatized unfairly. As someone who has battled mental health issues throughout his life, I think one step in the right direction to be able to talk about it. That's something I absolutely applaud here in Blasio, and personally in New York, of helping do just that. Supportive housing, I think it's, it's long overdue, that we have community that brings people together, that supports the least among us, and gives us the resources to thrive and succeed. I think these problems have not just sprung up recently. These are issues that we continue to challenge, we challenge by year in, year out. We have 48... We have 48 members of the city council that are Democrats. Democratic mayors, comptroller, public advocate, you name it. These are progressives, who want to say that we are pushing forward a progressive vision for the city, but where are some of the resources that we're asking for? Where are they? Why aren't we preserving resources for folks who are battling, who do educational programs or can be stigmatized, which are challenged by these issues? I think it's long overdue that our leaders put their money where their mouth is, and actually be the progressive beacon that New York City is capable of being. And I intend to be the one that stands up and holds city hall accountable, the speaker of the city hall, the city councils. The mayor himself, why aren't you pushing forward a boulder agenda? The tale of two cities needs a different end, and right now, it's not going to be, it's not good enough. And I'm going to be the one that finally pushes them and nags them until we actually start delivering the results that our communities demand.
Thank you. Thank you for your question. Community Access does great work in this district and City Park, so thank you. So supportive housing is incredibly important. When we look at the root cause of homelessness, it really is a lack of affordable housing. And when we're looking at the individuals that are on the street, many times, people who don't understand mental health issues will criminalize some of the homeless, and it just really has to start again with education and with awareness. So I'm very, very glad that they started Thrive NYC. I think that it is a good start. I think it's long overdue, and we have to push for better programs. I think we also have to look for community-based solutions. We have an excellent mental health clinic on East 13th Street, called the Roberto Clemente Center Clinic. It's for mental health wellness. It is culturally sensitive, and it is underfunded. You walk into that facility, you don't even have a receptionist that greets you. We have to take mental health seriously, and we have to look at how to implement it supportive housing. So yes, I think two priorities when it comes to affordable housing is, of course, senior housing, because we have a growing aging population, but supportive housing. That's onsite, social workers, counselors. I think we also need to do this in our schools. I think we need to put social workers and counselors in our schools. We really need to get the police out of our schools as well. And we have to start talking about mental health as soon as we can. We have to remove the stigmas, the stereotypes, and we really have to recognize that a lot of New Yorkers are affected by this. And so it really goes back to making sure that we fund the local programs, that we're funding our public health system, and that we're making sure that we're having these conversations, and really pushing the mayor, pushing the first lady, and working collegially, of course. That is horrifying to know, to have, to say that elected officials are going to go ahead and try to label people. Yes, there are 50 other members of the city council that you have to work with, and I plan to work with them collegially, as well as the mayor, but I will be the first to tell you that if I disagree with any of them, I will stand up publicly and say, you're wrong. This is not the right thing to do. This is not the right thing for our city or for our constituents, and make sure that we fight for every single dollar and resource of the community.
One of the things that distinguishes my candidacy is that you will never see me run for mayor, you will never see me run for Congress. I am running for city council District Two. This is not a stepping stone for me. My focus will be this community. So in terms of mental health, one of the biggest problems is that we used to have guidance counselors, we used to have social workers in schools. We don't have that anymore. We have guidance counselors who are responsible sometimes for 800 picks. They might as well stay home. That, you can't even get a drop in the bucket with that. So I think that when you think about mental health issues, many times, that emerge during those teen years, brain development is critical. They say it is more significant than in infancy. And you've got kids who are exposed to all kinds of challenges, and drugs, alcohol, risky behaviors, and if we don't have guidance counselors that they can turn to, we are, we're creating a long-term problem. Who can afford mental health in the United, in the United States today? I don't know. In terms of HMOs, they certainly took care of our medical doctors, but what happened is psychiatrists, and psychologists, and dentists did not get caught up in HMOs. As a consequence, they charge whatever they like, and who can afford it? So I give credit to our wonderful first lady, Charlene McCray, who started NYC Thrive, but sadly, it is just a start. It's a website, it's a phone call. We need to make a real commitment in the city council to mental health for our children, for our homeless, two-thirds of whom are challenged with mental health issues. We could do so much better together.
As a former attorney with Leaking Services in New York City, I understand the importance of supportive housing, which is why I fully support it. And I also understand that there's a negative stigma of individuals who have mental disabilities. And I think that's the way to start it. We need to reprogram our community. Too many people are afraid to say, my child has a disability, or too many people are quick to say, this individual doesn't belong in the community. The reality is, this has always been a welcoming community, and we need to ensure that District Two continues to be a beacon of diversity, including those who have mental disabilities. That's just not right. But what I'm proposing is a holistic approach, advocates. We know we have one of the best school, social work school programs in the country at NYU, which is right next door. There's no reason that we aren't working together with NYU. There's no reason that we're not working together with other community-based organizations. As a city councilmember, you have a discretionary fund, and my commitment is to ensure that we're empowering our community-based organizations, our non-for-profits, and also holding our universities accountable. You're in this community. You have to make sure that your students give back to our community. There's no reason with having a school of social work right next door, that we don't have mobile stations parked outside of every corner. There's no reason that we don't have taming for individuals. These are things that we could do together. We need to, one, educate the community and say, listen, individuals who may have a mental disability doesn't mean that they aren't a productive member of our community, or don't contribute to our community. Because the reality is, our neighbors do contribute to our community. The second thing is, we need to work together. We need to focus on a holistic approach, which includes our universities and our neighboring colleagues in other districts. Thank you.
So, the next question, Cooper Square Committee, Board Member Nina Delisandro is going to ask a question about affordable housing. You can use that microphone there. And the responses may come this way this time.
Thank you, first of all, all of you for coming to us, and for your, for your interest in coming out and really serving the community, and what you're, what you're running for. Housing issue. The district below 14th Street, as I'm sure you know, is, is over 85% rental, and most of it's regulated. Nonprofit, community-based housing groups like Cooper Square Committee, and GOLZ, and others are organizing tenants to deal with speculators. We use buyouts, and use the courts, and if all else fails, construction, disruptive construction, in occupied buildings as tools to displace rent-regulated tenants. I think all of us would be really grateful to know, what are some of the legislation, ideas, and resources also you plan to use in the city council to support the efforts of groups like ours that are working to prevent displacement and to prevent deregulation? Thank you.
The first thing that we need to do is hold landlords accountable. Certainly not every landlord is a Harvard story, but the first step is, who are the landlords? We don't even know how to hold the landlords accountable, because we don't know who the landlords are. So we need legislation that says, who's the landlord? First step. Second step is, we need to admit that a posting that says that you have a housing court, a prior housing court case, need not apply. That's discriminatory. That goes against our tenant associations. That goes against our organizations like this, like GOLZ, who are training tenants on their rights. As a tenant advocate, as a housing attorney, I understand the importance of saying, no, you need to fix this. If you don't fix it, we're withholding our rent. And that's what the law says. There's no reason that landlords are able to create a list, and this list gets published. Let me tell you about this list. There's a list that goes on with your name and a complaint. Even if you bring a complaint, if you bring an HP action, which means you're suing your landlord, so that way your landlord is held responsible to make repairs, right? There's no reason that anyone's name should be so, because you're enforcing and using your rights. How do we organize organizations? How do we empower each other if our basic fundamentals were right to organize, to stand up for ourselves, to stand up for the community, is at risk? And the reality is, we need to regulate this. There shouldn't be a landlord holding us, saying, well, yeah, bring me to court, because they know if you bring him to court, that's right, the chances of you finding another rental property is next to none. We need to do away with this list. It's unacceptable. And we do that by ensuring we're not accepting finances from landlords or developers. It's unacceptable. And that's what we need to do, and that's what I'm going to do as the next city councilmember. Thank you.
So we have a lot of work to do, and it always slays me that we license manicurists, but we do nothing with respect to landlords. They get to run rampant, and that is a contrast that just blows my brain. So we got to get really smart about making sure that we're holding them accountable. I think we also need to revamp the Department of Buildings, too. You know, I work with some 80-year-olds who are experiencing construction harassment, dust, noise, and, you know, construction 24/7, and frankly, they'll call the Department of Buildings, and first of all, they're lucky if somebody picks up. Second of all, if they do get somebody, you won't see them for a week. And by the time they get there, the violation is over, and they're saying, who, what, why did you call? So that, that's an incredible waste of our time. I also want to say that I will pledge, in light of the 11 bills that just got passed by the city council, and I commend the city council for them, I will pledge to be down to the Department of Buildings. I want to be a watchdog there. They're starting a task force, take me to the chair of the task force. I'll be down there. Because I'm a 50-year-old, and I'm who's 92-years-old, on a seventh-floor walk-up, who ended up having a stroke after, and dying after begging to be on a first-floor walk-up. This is, again, as I said, a humanitarian crisis of displacement. We can do better. We have to expect the city council to do better, and we also have to add 421A tax exemptions. Exactly. Nothing from developers. Thank you. With the $2 million tax exemptions that we give to the developers, we could be building supportive housing, and making sure that those most vulnerable populations, those with health issues, those with, individuals with disabilities, and those seniors are getting those wraparound services that they need. So I want to make sure you know I do support, supportive housing. It works for the mental health, health-challenged individuals. It works for seniors. It works for our most vulnerable.
Thank you, Nina, for your question, because I want to thank you for all the work you've done against your own predatory landlord. We here know that there is a citywide list, but here in District Two, we have our own list. We have our own list of bad actors and operators who continue to practice frivolous litigation, defamation of services, and harassment. And it's not just verbal harassment, or having somebody like Al Anthony Falconite pose as the FedEx guy, okay? This is about really making sure that we are not just holding them accountable, but forcing it, and making sure that we set an example. It took a lot of people in this room to get Steve Cromer indicted on felony counts, okay? There was a lot of organizing. It took a lot of work. And so what we need to do, and what I want to do, what I pledge to the city councilperson, is make sure that we're actually having more meetings like this. Because as a caseworker at Good Lower East Side, as a community organizer, we would have people come in. I would have my clients come in and tell me about their landlord, or their building was just sold, and they really don't have any idea what's going on. And so slowly, we would begin to identify. And so yes, it goes from something basic, like showing someone how to really call 311 and track that complaint number, all the way up to making sure that we get rid of these LLC shell companies, in which you are not able to identify the same bad guy, I mean, with different people on different levels of government. We're going to need our state, and we're going to need our federal allies. So we have a lot of work to do. Yes, the DOV reform package, the Stanford Tenant Safety, which I am, I was proud to work on, was incredibly important, and it was a big, big deal for the housing movement. 11 bills, really worked on by organizations in this community. So what I've done is I've built these relationships with housing organizations all over the city, and specifically in District Two. Very proud to say I was endorsed by CDH, who does great work citywide in Uptown against this very thing, and making sure that I'm bringing those allies really to the table, and that we're talking about what we can pass, who we should be funding that's doing the work, and how we can expand on constituent services. So I'm really, really proud of that, and again, making sure that we do get more affordable housing, that we tackle dust, noise, and pests, and we take care of our quality of life, because we deserve to live here in, in great condition.
All right, so, well, I go, my colleagues have said here, transparency is vitally important. I want to know if my rent possibly goes to Jared Commissioner or not? That's a very basic expectation that many of us would want to have. You know, there are lists, right? There are lists of bad landlords, but I want more than a list. I want a lawsuit. I want to go out there and be punitive, the way that they are about towards our tenants. I want to be punitive to these guys. They don't ever think that they can get away with taking advantage of our neighbors, of our seniors. I hear time and time again, seniors who are on screen, who their landlord is just dying to get them out of that unit, just cannot wait. And so they don't, they don't repair the heat. They don't fix the broken door, the broken window, just waiting them out, hoping that they say, oh, you know what, I got to get out of here. By the time someone, if they even pick up 311, if anyone's even on the other line, even bothers to answer and process this complaint, months will go by. So if you're in a unit, in the state of winter, there's no heat, months do not matter. The heat, having the heat come up in the springtime is not going to give you any good. So a solution that I want to provide is like, let's take landlord repairs out of the equation. Let's provide vouchers to our seniors, and like, you can hire a handyman to fix this tomorrow afternoon, right? Let's circumvent all of this stuff. Let's get creative about how to tackle some of these problems. If you believe that government can and should enforce the good of people's lives, then you need people who actually give a damn, who are going to be out there in the community, going up and down to these buildings and holding landlords accountable, and looking into the LLCs, and who is actually behind some of these groups. If you want a different approach, you can't get it with, you want a different outcome, you can't get it with the same approach. These are the same problems that we deal with year in, year out. If you want something different, if you want solutions, if you want, you get collegiality, that's a thing we want to talk about. I want to get along. We're getting along a little bit too well in city council, yes, right? People don't want to make waves. They don't want to make waves, they don't want to make waves, maybe they have other jobs that they're thinking about, you know, four, eight years from now. I'm saying that time of niceness and getting along, go along, has got to end. The people that live in this neighborhood are who we want to get along with. I don't care about getting along with the other members of the city council, if they don't have the guts to fight back the way that we need them to.
On behalf of ABCC, I'd like to introduce Carol Com, acting manager director, who will ask her question.
Thank you all for being here. And for those of us who are familiar with its history, Olpea 64 Chaz Al Oyo holds a special significance in its identity as a public building, dedicated to the revival of community and of cultural survival. How would you ensure that our neighborhood will be able to have Olpea 64 as a community and cultural resource center?
Great question. This, if you don't know, maybe the earliest of history, since I don't have a lot of time. This is an old-school Olpea 64 Chaz Al Oyo, which is in this neighborhood a few blocks away. And 12 years ago, it was put on the auction block by Giuliani and sold to a private developer. and sold to a private developer with restrictions on it that it had to be used for community use. It has sat there vacant. Nothing has happened. In fact, it looks collapsing. It is one of the saddest properties, I think, in our neighborhood. And we really need to make sure that we can use it for true community use. So it has been a long battle. And there are a lot of people, again, in this room and in this community that have fought to make sure that we get it for the cultural and community center that we deserve. We need a community space. We need more arts and culture in this district. And this would be the perfect place for that. We should look at what our needs are, right? This is a big building, but it is privately owned. And it is someone who has just sat on it for 17 years. That is unacceptable. The mayor has not practiced eminent domain, which we have pushed for many years. We have held press conferences to say that we deserve this space. And it is not right that it has sat vacant for 17 years. So we're going to make sure that we use a few things, right? Agitation, organization, and make sure that we use the relationships that we have to finally say, "This is our time. This is our time to get the building back, bring it to our community, and use every tool in the box and every single organizer out here." You know, it is a complicated legal issue with that building. And I am really, really saddened to say that, again, really, nothing has happened. We have a kind of a tumultuous relationship there. I'm someone who is going to go to the table, negotiate, make sure that we can get what we need, and really, again, use that building for our community, because we deserve it and we need it now. So, again, working with you all, working with the mayor, who really hasn't said anything or really stepped in at all for this building, and really saying, "It's our time. We deserve it," and really standing up to break syndrome.
One of the things that's been a real learning experience for me in traveling through Council District 2 is that there are areas that have community and there are areas that don't have that level of community. And frankly, when I go to Ram Street Settlement, when I go to Henry Street Settlement, there's so much to be proud of there. Seniors are taken care of. Community thrives. It's all about making sure that we're looking out for each other and providing arts, culture, basic services. That's not the case throughout the community. So I think it's really important that we make sure that we continue to provide services for our youth that's sorely lacking in Council District 2. I'll tell you where I live. There are NYCHA housing developments where there are nothing for seniors and there are nothing for kids. There used to be a settlement house there. Long gone. So we've lost a lot in our community. And frankly, we have to fight for every site and every opportunity for the city to invest in making sure that those services are available to us. Too many people feel isolated. Too many people feel alone, particularly seniors. And when there are facilities like Charis, like the Baruch Bath Houses, the Laguardia Bath Houses, the Smith Bath Houses, we really have to ask our city council to come to the table and make sure that these buildings don't stand there like tombs. And Charis is one that's been there for 20 years. So has the bath house at Baruch Houses. These are facilities that could be transforming our community. And I will underscore again, for seniors, for individuals with disabilities, and for our youth, many of whom have no place to go. We just have to do a much better job of holding our mayor, our city council accountable for not allowing very rare properties to sit there paralyzed, because people won't come to the negotiation table. That's really a blight on us as a community and in terms of our community leaders as well. So we can do much better.
I'm glad you asked that question about the O.P.S. 64, because at a recent debate, we were asked a similar question. And at that point, I had done some research. And the research led me to this. We dropped the ball. We had an opportunity to buy that building, and we didn't buy it. We had the opportunity to buy the O.P.S. 64 at a 1% interest rate for about $120,000, which is pennies when you think about it. That, just Google it. And the thing you have to realize is before something goes to auction, it's a city building. City gets first dibs. Google it. We dropped the ball. Since dropping the ball, the next step is, well, you need to create a survey. Survey that land. Has there been a survey done? No. Why not? The first thing we need to do is use our resources and bring our community together. How are we going to bring our community together if there's no proposal? If you've been so infuriated with the PS 64, why not spend money for a survey? Why not say, "This proposal's going to go here"? Right? Because after that last debate, I went home and I did some research. And being, you know, the lawyer that I am, I saw that, wait, what? There was a proposal for $15 per square foot for nonprofit organizations? Why didn't we take that? Why don't we have a senior senator? Why don't we have an arts and cultural senator? Charis was offered space at $15 per square foot. And according to an article I found online, they didn't want to spend more than $1,000 a month for all that space. Google it. My doors are open. I'll listen to everyone. My office is at 737 East Sixth Street. Come by, we'll sit on my laptop, and I'll bring you all these articles for you. But let's educate each other. Let's work together. And let's make our community vibrant again. The arts are important in our community. Thank you.
So for over two decades, this has been a vacant blight on our community. What makes you think that folks in power or the status quo will do another two decades? Where's the political will, the courage to actually act? You know, it's the same status quo. Let's just keep pushing, kicking the can down the road. Let's keep hunting. Let's make excuses about surveys and more bureaucracy. Let's just push it down, because nobody wants to do anything about it. Or they're just waiting for the highest bidder to come back. It's the same kind of smallness and maybe laziness. I don't even know if it's worse than that, that we got the Rivington situation, where people are not proactively looking into how we're saving these institutions in our community. It's the same smallness. It's the same lack of imagination and proactivity that threatens all of these gems in our community that our neighborhoods need so badly. 17 years. It's the same situation, the same conversation many of you had 10 years ago we're having today. What makes you think we're not going to have that conversation 10 years from now unless something dramatically changes?
If this building run by the same people in HPD and everywhere else is never going to change.
That's right. It's not going to change. We have the same people in all of these roles. That's exactly right. You said it better than I did. So I think we need to hold people accountable. We need to bring new people into the fold. We need to demand more results, not just more surveys, not more bureaucracy. Where is the city council on this issue? Where is the mayor? Where is our city council member? Where is the speaker of the city council? Where are they? It's the antecedent that must end. We're needing more accountability across the board, and I intend to bring that.
Hi. I'm asking the next question on behalf of the Greenwich Village Society for Story Preservation. So as hopefully you all know, we are experiencing a unwanted development boom in part of the district, much of the district, but specifically in the areas along Third and Fourth Avenue, University Place, and Broadway. That's because this is a part of our neighborhood that has totally inadequate zoning, almost no landmark protections in a way that few parts of the Village or East Village or the surrounding area have. So we're seeing 300-foot-tall towers going in, replacing small, low-scale buildings. We're seeing residential buildings being demolished to make way for commercial buildings, hotels with bars and clubs in them, tech high-rises, things of that nature. The mayor has adamantly refused for two and a half years to consider a very reasonable zoning change to control development in this area. It wouldn't be crazily restrictive. It would just maintain the character of this neighborhood. He's now seeking to get approval from the city council for a tech hub on 14th Street, which may have some very good things that could be a part of it, but under the current conditions, will accelerate this overdevelopment trend in this area greatly, because it will help bring this Silicon Alley down from Union Square through to Astor Place. So the question I have for you is basically a two-part. Do you all support the zoning changes that GDS, HPH, and many in the community have been asking for for this area? And are you willing to stand up to the mayor and say, "If you want my approval for the tech hub on 14th Street, you have to provide zoning protections for this neighborhood"?
Can everybody hold up their sign? Thank you. Not lost on me. Absolutely. I think everybody on this panel pledged that our last form, absolutely, no tech hub without rezoning. So understand that this is a bluff. I also want to say that, again, Nina, PhD together. And at NYU, we walked those streets together. Went to school there. That's a very, very unique place, that area. There's nothing like it in New York City at all. Frankly, I love to go there at petition, because I have the best conversations and meet the most amazing people. But getting to the point of how we have this problem right now, so it all has to do with real estate developers. It has to do with revenue, funding, campaigns, making decisions, 421A tax exemptions. Get real estate developers out of our elections. I have to call myself the Bernie Sanders of Council District 2, because I have nothing but individual donors supporting me. I have no real estate developers. I have no lobbying firms. I have no super PACs. I have individual donors. And that's exactly what we need. We need to make sure that we are accountable to our voters. There is a good New York Times editorial letter up, I should say, an editorial comment by the editorial board of the Times saying that New York Democrats are snubbing voters. When our electeds elect our electeds, it is really cynical. And I know voters are right to choose their representatives. So I want to underscore how critical it is to make sure that you think for yourself and you vote for those candidates. Whatever the race may be, they're going to represent your interests and not real estate developers' interests.
Okay. Thank you so much for this question, because land use is one of the, and rezoning and zoning is one of the tools that you get as a city councilperson. So this is incredibly important, because this really started many, many years ago, in 2008 and 2009, with the East Village rezoning. I think why I'm bringing that up, why it's so important, is because that was community-based. So you need a community-based plan for rezoned neighborhoods in order to really promote affordable housing and making sure that we're keeping things in scale and authentic. So this rezoning is important, because there are people that live around 14th Street. This is not a purely commercial area. These are people that were born and raised in this neighborhood, who have spent many, many years, who have raised their families, who go to school and shop and really enjoy Third and Fourth Avenue and University Place and Broadway. The current councilwoman, while I was in her office, we went and identified other soft sites, just like the Baltimore site. And the Baltimore site, what happened was there was a transfer of development rights and air rights in ordering, really enabling them to build high and out-of-scale. So we have to make sure that we are looking at how to implement something responsible, that is looking at how to take care of the existing residents and keep our neighborhoods in scale and authentic. That's what makes this place so amazing. So when it comes to a tech hub, absolutely, we want to make sure that we have programs for our underserved youth and that we're bringing tech jobs into this, into our city and for a 21st century economy, but not at the risk of really affecting the quality of life in a serious way. I worked on legislation to try to regulate after I was construction. That is, the bill that is sitting in the city council, because, yes, there is a lot in real estate in politics, and we have to make sure that we are protecting each and every resident and our quality of life. So, yeah, we do support this rezoning. I think it's important. It always has to be community-based, because when you have a top-down approach to rezoning, it gets struck down, just like what happened in East Harlem at Body Hill. So we have to make sure that we're working together. It might take a little longer, but we're going to know that it's coming from us, the people who live and breathe in these neighborhoods and know the issues best.
So, yes, I think we're all at the united front here. It's, you know, very disappointing that the mayor won't negotiate, even if there's going to be some concessions that he won't even deal. I think it just speaks to the interests and where they're hearted when it comes to where they want to take our neighborhood. That's where the money is. That's right. It's not that complicated to see where all the interests are. And I think we all share this view, that there is opportunity for a tech hub. But there are also big drawbacks. There are big liabilities that threaten what we need more than anything else. Were we clamoring, "Do we need a tech hub in this neighborhood"? Do we need more Silicon Valley bros in our neighborhoods? Was that some kind of a lead assessment that I missed? We need housing. We need to protect the character of our neighborhoods. That's what I mean. If they want to do that, then they need to have more skin in the game. They need to give us more housing. They need to invest more in programs for our schools and underfunded programs across our neighborhood. Let's ask for a pound of flesh if they want to bring that into our neighborhood. Otherwise, don't even bother. If it's not meeting the greatest need of our district, and that's housing, it's preservation, keeping our, keeping East Village weird. That's what it is. We all know and love that.
So I totally support the zoning. And if we need to rezone, and this is the reason why, it's a outdated system. We're the only city that created zoning laws to protect the community. And over 100 years later, it's not protecting our community and we're not doing anything to change that. We need to change that. Right? We need to change it now. We need to preserve our community and what it looks like. Right? We all agree that we could use jobs. And this tech hub could create jobs. But these jobs, if they're not for our community, by our community, supporting our seniors, supporting our students, the average tech person who does coding earns $75,000 per year with a high school diploma. Why aren't our school systems, why didn't the mayor say, "Hey, listen, School District 2, School District 3, why are you 1 and 2 rather? Let's prepare our students, because we want to create this job hub. Let's create technological programs for our young ladies." This is mainly a man-dominated job, and that's unacceptable. Right? It's something that we could really change that. And we change that by studying education. We need to protect our community. We need to ensure to have jobs in our community. We need to ensure that when we walk through the streets, we're not bending our necks to figure out, "Does someone live there, or is that an office building"? It's unacceptable. It's unacceptable. And it's unacceptable, because the system has been in control by the state board of New York. And none of us are accepting money from them, right? All of us, for the most part, are grassroots campaigns. But the difference is, you need to follow the money a step further. You need to see if any politicians are donating money You need to see if any politicians are donating money who are accepting money for revenue. Because that's just one person removed, right? So please check out the Campaign Finance Board, follow the money and see what politicians are accepting money from these revenues of the world. Thank you.
Good evening, candidates. I'm Kelly Carroll from the Historic Districts Council. And we have really been struggling along with our fellow groups about agency responsiveness, whether that's through the Landmarks Preservation Commission or from the City Planning, Department of City Planning. A few examples recently was a year ago, we had a rally on East 11th Street about ten minutes that were to be torn down and replaced with a millennial hotel, which I take offense to because I'm a millennial. So they don't want that hotel. And these buildings were identified by the agency themselves as being eligible. And despite rallies and community outpouring, in the end, the Landmarks Commission failed to act and they are now a pile of rubber rubble and the hotel is going out. Another example was the ZQA Citywide Rezoning last year. Most of the borough boards voted against that and somehow it's still got through. Another example, several of our historic districts are waiting in limbo. They are eligible, they meet the criteria, they're significant buildings. And the Landmarks Preservation Commission is not doing anything. And in the meantime, they're being hacked apart. And then when they finally do get designated, they'll be too hacked apart to be eligible anymore. So our question is, what will you do to make these agencies more responsive to the community desire to preserve their neighborhoods?
So I have a lot of issues with the administration and how sluggish a lot of the services are. But having been in government, I know that we under-resourced. I think one of the biggest things we need to do is help give resources to the committees that are helping review landmark requests and making sure that we're able to expedite the ones that we definitely know that we want to protect. But these are issues that keep cropping up. These are not complicated issues for us to figure out. Do we actually care about protecting and preserving our neighborhood? Yes or no? It seems pretty unanimous as the city council and other members of leadership in the city. It seems like everyone does. But yet you just made the point though, people are voting against these measures and yet somehow it's just getting steamrolled. Because if we don't have the money, we don't have the access, or we don't have the power, what's the problem? We have 40 active members of the Democratic Party who are city council members. We have progressive blood in all of our veins here who want to protect, least among us, want to protect seniors, working people, women, immigrants, our own neighbors. Like, what's the problem? It's the lack of political imagination, the lack of political will to change, to agitate, to piss people off if you have to, in order to stand up against these very, very powerful interests. It's about time that our policies, the people we put into office are held accountable. The policies that we are putting forth reflect our deeply, imprecisely held values. These are not complicated things. And I just don't understand what the problem is. It's the same result over and over again. This meeting, if it happens next year, five years, 10 years from now, this has been an abject failure across the city of New York. This is the greatest city in the world. We ask the best and brightest of all of the world to come here and do something. But where are our elected officials delivering for each and every one of you? Our hardworking neighbors who are just trying desperately to stay in the neighborhood they love and recognize the home that they're living in, the neighborhoods they walk down the street? These are not complicated issues. We're all in agreement here. So why are we seeing more change in the progress and the creep that we see in development?
Thank you, Kelly. Thank you for all the work that Historic Districts Council does. If there's one thing that we have in this neighborhood, we have strong preservation groups that are doing work not just here but citywide. So we have to make sure that when it comes to the other members of the city council, that they really see preservation as a priority. And the fact is that a lot of them do not. It is not high on the list of priorities. It is not on their list of priorities at all. So we have to keep that in mind as we go forward. And I think when it comes to whether rallying for rezoning or being on 11th Street, you, many of you in this room can say that I am there with you on the front lines. I was at the rally for the rezoning. I was at the rally on 11th Street. And I think one of the most interesting things I saw on East 11th Street was really this coming together of not just preservationists, of not just people like Rosie Mendez and Senator Hoyleman and Deborah Blick, but I also saw labor there. Because those buildings were going to be destroyed and something new was going to be brought up and they weren't going to give those jobs to hardworking people who are in organized labor, who deserve good wages, and they were not going to hire locally. So there was a lot of room for these sites, for our movement, to really bring people together in a different way that we haven't seen before. So I think you're going to need someone, of course, who has preservation as a priority. And I think we're all here because we agree with that. But we also need to recognize the groups who are doing all the work, who are doing the research, who are submitting testimony at the Landmarks Preservation Commission and who are really pushing forward legislation that's going to look at how do we make sure that we get these places landmarked, that we get our historic districts, and we protect our community? A lot of times, time is of the essence. So we have to move quickly, we have to work together, and we have to make sure that we are identifying the parts that we need to really make sure our neighborhoods stay intact. So I'm someone who has worked on these issues before. I've worked with a lot of these groups. And I'm going to bring that collaborative style. And again, that intense kind of, you know, I can be very aggressive. I'm a very nice person. I'm very approachable. But when it comes to protecting our communities, I tell you, I will go hard for each and every one of these issues. So yes, I think that there is a lot of great groups doing the work. I want to support you and want to do that, bring in the political will that we need to push forward some of these issues.
So I think we have to crack open the landmark preservation process. I think that all the amazing work that you have done for decades to preserve our neighborhoods, it's heartbreaking to see the results when real iconic buildings are lost and streets are destroyed as developers, private equity funds take over neighborhoods. So much has been lost. In many ways, it's so late, it's after the fact. I know I was at a community board meeting not so long ago, they're talking about mandatory inclusionary housing. And I said to HPHD, where were you 10 years ago? We're in the biggest construction boom in 50 years in New York City. And in many ways, it feels like we've got, you know, a truck running through our buildings and our neighborhoods. So I do want to make sure that as a city council member, I take advantage both of the council's investigative responsibilities and their oversight responsibilities. You know, put them in a room, have a conversation, make sure we know what you go through when you're trying to preserve our neighborhoods. Because frankly, you have very singular information that a lot of us don't. And so I know that as a member of the Murrayville Neighborhood Association, we work very hard to preserve our historic district. I have to tell you, I lived in Kip's Bay after the last forum that was held where we were talking about preservation initiatives. They're saying, who's looking out for Kip's Bay preservation initiatives? Go from East 35th Street to South Street, south of the Williamsburg Bridge. And this district is under siege again and again. And I don't want to harp on it, but it's a reality. Real estate developers are not our friends. We're neither preserving our buildings or taking care of the communities that live in those buildings. And our job is to make sure that the people who built this city can remain in their homes and they don't feel intimidated, they don't feel alone, and they don't feel isolated. And again, making sure that the character of our neighborhoods are not destroyed so that Baltimore sites can turn into luxury condominiums. It's called glass building blight, that's what it is.
We need to hold our agencies responsible. There's no easier way to say that. We need to make sure that we hold Preservation and Landmarks, Department of Buildings, HPHD, we need to hold them accountable and we need to hold them responsible. It's not enough to just have a forum. It's not enough for them to just come and say, please testify before us. And then they go and do whatever they want to do. It's unacceptable. It's completely unacceptable, right? So what we need to do is, we need transparency. We need to follow the money. We need to ensure that the people that we're electing into office don't have any agenda that would prevent us from preserving our neighborhoods. Our communities look so beautiful. Our district, the fabric of our district is the architecture. The beautiful buildings have had, the colorful vibrant buildings, the bodegas that are now closed. It doesn't matter where you walk through the district. It doesn't matter if you're on 35th Street. It doesn't matter if you're on South Street C Court. It doesn't matter if you're on Avenue D. You're going to see closed storefronts. You're going to see closed storefronts that are developed and built or designed by amazing architects that should have been preserved, that can still be preserved. And we need to make sure that if an agency isn't doing what it's supposed to do, then perhaps we need to consider giving sanctions, right? Because if you don't pay your fine to Department of Buildings, guess what's going to happen? It's going to increase. And then they're going to put a block on your home. They're going to do something and we need to be able to hold them accountable. It's not enough to say we need to work together. Of course, we need to work together. No one in here is saying that we're going to do anything on our own. It's a community. We need to keep it as a community. We need to work together. And we need to make sure that we're able to hold Department of Buildings accountable, just like we hope that you'll hold us accountable. Thank you.
We at LESBI, Lower East Side Preservation Initiative, believe and we hope you agree that the East Village Lower East Side has really unsurpassed historic, architectural, and cultural importance. There's a history that starts before, well before Peter Steinbrenner, and has continued up into the 19th century, the 20th century, and now into the 21st century. And we're about to lose this history as we lose our historic environment. The architecture, the streetscapes, the buildings that you see around you that have been up for a century, a century and a half, they all tell a story. And they tell a story of really America. And so with that introduction, I want to introduce Eric Bouger, a LESBI vice president, who's going to ask a question for us. Thank you.
The East Village Lower East Side Historic District was created in 2012 and includes Second Avenue and many of the adjoining blocks from roughly East 3rd Street to East 7th Street and also a neighborhood north of Tompkins Square Park. That was a big victory, but we believe it should be expanded. Do you commit to supporting an extension of this district that includes in particular areas north of East 7th Street? If so, what concrete steps would you take to persuade the MOPC to move forward with this expansion? And what would be your timeframe for doing so?
So I had the opportunity today to spend some time with a friend in the neighborhood. And you all know that from building to building, the history there, if the buildings could speak, you'd spend about three hours going down half a block thinking about the people who lived there, the experience that they had historically. We were talking about the General Slocum disaster, the ferry disaster, going back to, I think it was 1904, representative of the waves of immigration that's gone on. There's no place like the Lower East Side, the East Village, any place in America. And when you talk to architects, it really is one of a kind. You can't preserve enough of the history here, the buildings here. And again, I'm not just talking about the edifices. I'm talking about the beauty. I'm talking about the neighborhood. I'm talking about the community. So I think you've got some serious preservationists here. I've lived here for 25 years. I have to tell you that as a graduate student, I worked with artists in this area. Somehow I was the fabricator, better artist than they were. I have no idea how that worked, but it was really a lot of fun seeing this neighborhood. I have to tell you, it doesn't look anything like it in terms of how it was 20 years ago. That was a very, very unique time in the history of the Lower East Side. So before we make any more mistakes and lose that history and that beauty and the poetry of the Lower East Side, Eric, I'm going to tell you, extend the boundaries even further. Don't limit yourself. And let's make sure that we show up for meetings like this. There is power in numbers. Come make noise, come tell your stories, and make sure that this neighborhood is not a casualty of real estate developers.
So I totally support expanding the historic district. When I think of my childhood and I think of going to Tompkins Square Park and thinking to myself, wow, this artist seems cool. And then later on, as a college student, saying, that guy looks familiar and being able to see. Wait up, that was Basquiat who was at Tompkins Square Park, right? Like, that's what our district is about. The fact that you meet someone who studied at a school and she later becomes a Court of Appeals judge, Justice Rivera, who's from the Lower East Side, who studied north of the historic district. We need to protect our community. As far as timing goes, we need to start preserving our community through organizations such as yours. We need to start writing our history and teaching our history. And we need to add it to our local curriculums because it's important for our youth to know where they're walking through. We also need to start with, we need to start renaming a lot of our signs, right? And that's where we're going to preserve our neighborhood. That's where we preserve our culture. And that's where we keep community, community. That's where you get the sense of pride. I'm the first person to kind of put in my back pocket when someone's like, where are you from? I'm like, Lower East Side. And they start, oh, I'm from Chelsea, Whoopi Goldberg. I'm like, okay, Whoopi Goldberg. I got Madonna. I got Basquiat. And then they want to go Indian-American. And I'm like, okay, we have Justice Rivera, Court of Appeals, right? We have the first black woman millionaire who grew up in baruch houses. There's no reason why we don't have a name after her. We have to make sure that our communities are preserved. And the way we do it is through education. And we need to educate people through science because that's a simple step. And we need to take simple steps to ensure that we're preserving our community so that way we keep the discussion going. Thank you.
Yes, Eric, I support extending zoning. I live on Second Street now, we see. When I decided to make this neighborhood my home, it was for this very reason. It's for the character of the neighborhood, the quality of the people, the richness of the culture. That needs to be preserved. That is what makes our neighborhoods the best. No offense, your boss, Chelsea, is a very nice place. That's not what we want in our neighborhood. You know, we don't want these stainless steel, glass-beaming buildings. We like having a little grit. We like having the distinct molding and the intricate architecture in our buildings. But I also, I want to say something and I just want to be honest, I think. There needs to be a balance that we need to be sure of. We need more affordable housing units. We need more meals. I don't believe that that has to come at the expense of preserving our neighborhood. I'm not saying that I think all developments are bad. I'm not saying that we need to ban every new building that comes up, that wants to be built here. What I'm saying, we need that, we need that stock. The law's supply and demand do not square up if we have a limited supply and the demand for affordable housing continues to grow. I just want you to know that I, you may not agree with that. You may think that that is a talking point for developers, but it is not. I do not believe that we need to make those kind of compromises. We can do both. We can preserve our neighborhoods. We can create more opportunities for working families to live and thrive in our neighborhoods, for everyone in this room to age and place. We can do those things if we have the creativity, the political imagination to challenge what we're told the two options we have, preservation or development. They're not mutually exclusive. These are false choices. And I want to be the city council member that has the creativity, the proactive point of view and engaging people in, to bring the stakeholders to the table so we can strike that divide and be as creative as the people who built this neighborhood, finding new solutions for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric, for the question. Yes, we support this. You know, I received a scholarship to go to high school on St. Mark's Place between First and A. So that would be included. And it is such a special little street. It has the tenement buildings and to me, it's incredibly charming, like a lot of parts of the neighborhood. But I agree, we do have to look beyond that. We have to look district-wide, we have to look citywide. And essentially, these are campaigns. And so what you're going to get with me as a city councilperson is you're going to get a community organizer in this seat. And so when you have a campaign, there are things you need to do. You need to get your facts, you need to get your information, and you need to make sure that you are reaching the people that you were doing outreach, right? So we need to really diversify the movement. We need to bring more people into the preservation movement. We need to bring all ages, all demographics. I think a lot of that starts with education. I think a lot of that starts with education. So I agree, I think we need to bring some of this information and some of the things we've accomplished and some of the things that we need to do, really locally. So when we look at education as a whole, even in our classrooms, we really need to think about how are we bringing local history and local culture into that curriculum so people know what they're experiencing, kids know what they're experiencing when they're outside. So, you know, this is, preservation is extremely comprehensive, right? It absolutely has to do, not just with our community gardens, but it has to do with our housing. It has to do with the HDFCs, this high concentration of HDFCs that are here. So when we're looking to, when we're trying to do a historic district in the neighborhood, when we're trying to do a historic district in the neighborhood, you know, these are people's homes. So when we're looking at HDFCs and these historic districts, we also have to make sure that people who are gonna be affected have the technical, really assistance and the education to know what that means when you landmark an entire district. So I think we can do it together, I think we have the talent, I think we have the expertise, and we definitely have the community organizing, pioneering spirit groups in this community to do that.
Okay, I'm gonna try to move this along a little bit faster. We are going to have, ask the candidates to limit their responses to one minute so that we can maybe get additional questions in here. Since we only really have this space until, kind of, people are clearing it out by nine thirty, and we're gonna end before then, it would be even better, because I can see some people starting to drift out. But I'm glad that everyone who's here is staying, and I hope the candidates are okay with staying even after the meeting to talk to people in the middle of the day. Okay, so I'm gonna just ask Deborah Lee, who's an HDFC shareholder at 209 Seventh Street, to come up and ask a question about HDFC.
Hi, I'm Deborah Lee, I'm a shareholder in the money Seventh Street, HDFC shareholder. The district we hope to represent contains over a hundred HDFC co-ops, nearly two thousand apartments. That's the fourth largest amount of all the council districts in the city. The regulatory agreements for many of these buildings have expired, and the units have been sold for market rate. So that represents a loss of much needed affordable housing for current and future generations. HPD has now proposed a new regulatory agreement that links tax abatements to affordability requirements. These tax abatements are important for many low-income residents, artists, out of the disabled so they can still afford to live in this neighborhood. Given that the city council will need to pass enablement legislation, what is your position on the future of the regulatory agreements for HDFC buildings in the district?
So for those who aren't a little bit more familiar with HDFCs or the proposed regulatory agreement, what the mayor is proposing via HPD is to essentially appoint a receiver and a monitor of the buildings, which would take away control from the owners. Many who have put in sweat equity, and it's completely unacceptable. And you don't hold our tenants ransom by saying, either sign this or you're not gonna get a tax abatement. Right? That's unacceptable. We need to come to the table, we need to see who dropped the ball and when. There was a HEP program which was to help those who were distressed homeowners. Why didn't we reach out to our homeowners who might have been going through something distress financially to prepare them to be better homeowners? I want to go on the record and say I'm completely against a mandatory regulatory agreement. Our individuals, our community, our over two thousand units that have put sweat equity in this district deserve to stay in this district. I need to look whoever the mayor is in the eye, and I would let the mayor know, the next mayor know, this is unacceptable, we're not letting you hold our district for ransom, you're not gonna play around with our taxes and threaten the sanctuary of our home. It's unacceptable.
So, as you all know, HDFCs were created to retain affordable housing for low-income and moderate-income individuals and families. I mentioned before that half of our affordable housing units were lost during the Bloomberg administration, and two thousand units, I didn't realize it's that many, that's incredible. We rely upon those units, they need to stay with individuals and with families. And frankly, if we're going to be making tax abatements contingent on signing that regulatory agreement, I think that people need to come to the table and make sure that the community is in accord with respect to what that agreement should look like, what the benefits are. People are afraid they're gonna lose those benefits, those tax benefits. I don't think you hold people hostage, not people who've been living in these units for many, many years, generations in these units. When I hear that units have been sold for market rate, that's heartbreaking. Because frankly, when we lose these units, you don't get them back. And we have to do everything we can to make sure that we get past the slippery slope. The mayor talks about two hundred thousand affordable housing units. Most of them already exist, so he's really making just a dent in building units that low-income and moderate-income families can afford. So I want us to hold on to every unit that we can, we can't afford to lose one. I'm so sorry, I missed your sign.
I think that across from the mayor's plan, that I feel like he wants to count these units towards his preservation goal. And these units are affordable, and they should remain affordable because of the sweat equity that was put into them, and because we have a lot of buildings that are actually operating very well independently with their own board governance. You know, this has been, again, these were born in a time when no one wanted to live here. This was a time of arson, of abandonment, so people went into these buildings rehabbing them themselves, making sure they're clearing out the nearby lots of rubble to create our community gardens. So we, of course, these buildings should not be penalized with a one-size-fits-all regulatory agreement when this is a very nuanced issue. There are a lot of buildings who have plenty of reserves, who are doing really well, and then there are buildings who are struggling financially. But that is because there has been a lack of intervention by HPD over the years, and this is a very quick solution to a long-term problem that should have been remediated a long time ago. So the solutions had to be from the bottom and community base, and we have to make sure that we're talking to each and every building and finding a solution that is good for them.
So, we're all on the same page, and I think it's a very common sense approach to make sure that folks who have put so much into their homes are not yet a hostage, and we can still keep folks where they are and have the dignity of respecting the investment that each and one of them have made, and make sure that they have affordable units and stay where they are. But what I'd like to see, and Carlina just mentioned a little bit of the lack of enforcement and intervention in some of these units, where, you know, I would like to see more people look into who's moving into some of these HDFCs. Who may have wealth outside of the country, or maybe their parents, and they may need the funding, they need the income threshold, but otherwise are independently wealthy, their parents have bought them this investment property, and they're actually not, actually in the intention of having more people lower than them living in those units. Why aren't we looking into that? You know, folks who move in there and suddenly become super wealthy later on, I think we need to look into what the spirit of the law is, what the spirit of the program is, versus what is actually happening in some of these HDFCs. And I don't see enough of that, we need to change it.
Hi, I'm on the other side of the table today. Laura Sewell, I'm transitioning in as the new executive director of the East Village Coalition, for those who don't know me. Councilmember Raphael Eschinal described his bill creating an office of nightlife as a win-win-win for businesses, cultural spaces, the city, and our community. But residents were not included in the hearing that preceded the city council's vote. The residents of District Two have every reason to be concerned that the legislation passed today is a boost to an industry which is thriving without public assistance and may push out manufacturers and mom-and-pop stores in dire need of city help to make way for even more of what we already have in excess in this district, economic displacement, a lack of business diversity, and a degraded quality of life for residents. How will you ensure there is sufficient community representation on the newly-created nightlife task force so the community can have real input on what happens in our neighborhood?
You know, there's a pattern developing here, that residents aren't involved in the decision-making process. And I hear that again in so many contexts. Frankly, I'll tell you a thirty-second story about being in a room with ten teachers and asking them in this conversation about New York City publication, education, what's lacking. And they said, what conversation? Nobody asked us anything. So this happens again and again, and I think with respect to the nightlife task force, we have to make sure that we're at the table. I know on Third Avenue, it's called Cabaret Row, I think it's, I think actually you came up with that line, and they took it further north with them. But a nightlife task force also, I think, involves community board responsibility and input as well. I'm gonna speak for my experience, I think that community boards have had a tendency not to be as scrutinizing as they need to be. I don't say that for all community boards, I say that for some community boards. But I do think we need to look at trying to get local control of state liquor licensing and making sure that, whether it's schools or whether it's licenses, that the community has direct input.
I believe it's crucial that everyone takes a part in what's going on, and we need real grassroots community organizing with regards to this task force. We need this because it affects the vacancies that happen when they go outside. It changes the landscape from when you can even walk outside, whether or not you can have a store across the street from you. It's sad that it's easier to get a mimosa on the Lower East Side than it is a sandwich, right? Like, I think we could all say that's a real issue, right? When I'm walking with my brave niece, I don't like to see, oh my God, it's noon and someone is already throwing up, and I hope they grow up in a canister, right? No, so we need some kind of special zoning. We need true special zoning, we need more transparency with regards to meetings, when the meetings are gonna be held, and we need you to be as vocal as ever. We need you to tell us what you see. The community is the eyes and ears of everything, and we need to make sure that you're a part of that task force, you have a voice in that task force, and that we have both an electronic and paper way of reporting complaints. Thank you.
And we mentioned Cabaret Row, but we have just out across the street from District Two, we have something called Hell's Square. So it is, it is an issue, there is a proliferation of nightlife at bars, and we have to make sure that when we find that balance between commerce and community, that we're really looking at how are we gonna make sure we get retail diversity while also making sure that the nightlife, the business, the bars, they're responsible operators. A lot of us here like a local restaurant, we like to go someplace locally to have dinner with friends, but it really just can't beat every single storefront on Avenue A, Third Avenue, just really throughout District Two. So in terms of the task force, the biggest issue is always representation, right? We have to make sure that we have people on this task force that are from this neighborhood and understand what it's like to have at one point been number one for 311 complaints and noise. Now, we're still there at the top, we're not number one anymore, but I think we're two or three. And we've really been going through this for a very, very long time. So it has to do, it's a very comprehensive issue, it has to do with making sure we have the right people on the task force, and we're looking at how to bring retail diversity into the district and supporting small businesses, and making sure that we're really working with all of the different kinds of nightlife operators, and also taking a look at the Cabaret Row.
So, we need better representation in task, task force, but I think we need to bring new stakeholders and empower more stakeholders. For instance, you know, I was talking to folks in recent nine about the biggest issue, and they, these are law enforcement, these are folks who are, you know, out in the streets protecting us, but they're getting locked down with calls of noise complaints. And what have you got to do, what can we do about that? Well, we like some of the nightlife we have in our community, I think. Folks who've been here for decades, they all got drunk, they got too at some point. We need to strike a balance, there are people who come to our communities who invest in the neighborhood, they spend money, they keep some of our storefronts up. I think there needs to be a balance that's struck, so it's not every bar that gets approved. My friend Ariel back there, in many of these community board meetings, and she's heard it all. I think there's a balance to strike between making a relationship between the community members and the businesses. And I referenced the police department, because they have found solutions. Maybe it's moving the speaker from the back to the front, and making sure that we can kind of have open dialogue between how we can find solutions, making sure that the noise complaints aren't too bad. These are just, I think, common sense approaches to what, we can find a harmonious way to have a lively community at night, but with limits. And that right now, I don't think we've even approached that threshold of the right balance.
I'm gonna ask Anita Isola, who's a resident of City Council District Two and a member of the GDSHP Board of Trustees, to ask a question.
I would like you each to address the issue of commercial space and the problems we're having in our area with regard to that. Specifically, whether you support the Small Business Jobs Survival Act, and if you do, what you would do to get it to here and to vote. And also, related to commercial spaces, the special zoning district that has been proposed by the East Village Community Coalition that would limit the number of chains, would limit the size of the stores, and would encourage local diverse small stores.
Okay, big question. This bill has been in some sort of purgatory for decades now. What is the problem here? You know, the opponents would say, oh, well, you don't know if it's constitutional. Why don't you pass the damn thing, and then let's figure out if it's constitutional? Let's actually let it do what it's intended to do. Let's have rent stabilization for our small businesses that can stay in their units, so they can stay and serve our community. Let's challenge this, of course, yeah, let's kick these folks out because it's not constitutional. No, let's just pass the damn thing and figure out what to do and improve it from there. As a kid who grew up in the kitchen of my parents' small, little Asian restaurant, I know how vitally important it is to preserve families, people of color, immigrants, this is their entry point in the American dream. We're not giving them the best opportunity to succeed and be a part of our community. And so the fact that over decades we've not been able to pass this law, it means more than just a new name, it means new people in the city council who are willing to keep pushing it, and ask the speaker of the city council, ask the mayor, build bigger coalitions, enforce them, why aren't you, for example, why aren't you having a vote on it for crying out loud, just a vote, and see if it actually passed? If the rhetoric keeps hearing about it from across the city, like, everybody wants this, everybody's, all right, we need to do this, and nothing happens. We need to change the people we're sending to city council, to make sure that we can pass this once and for all.
Yes, thanks for your question, I do support the Small Business Jobs Survival Act. I think we definitely have to talk about it in looking at a twenty-first century economy and the way people are
the way people are shopping. So I was there with the preservation groups. I was there with people in front of the new Starbucks on St. Marks and Avenue Way, because we are tired of the proliferation of chain stores, the national tenants that take over these spaces. And that has a lot to do with this consolidation of real estate in these buildings by, of course, just large owners, right? They have all of these buildings, they keep these storefronts vacant, and so they really are allowed to write that off. So we need to work with also our state elected officials to make sure that we're doing something about that. When it comes to small business survival, yes, I was at the hearing. We discussed it while I was on the Economic Development Committee of Committee Board Three. We need a special district zoning. We need to limit the front because only these national tenants could afford such large square feet. But we have to talk about how are we helping the existing businesses that exist? The property taxes that are passed on to the tenants, navigating city hierarchies and red tape, and making sure that they have real power when they go to the negotiating table with their landlord. So we need to make sure that we're putting all of this in place while really pushing forward progressive legislation that is a newer version of SBJSA, because it's 2017 and people are shopping a little bit differently. But we have to reward the merchant organizers that are doing the work and support shop local initiatives.
So Ronnie mentioned that the Small Business Jobs Survival Act has been kicked around for a long time. To be precise, get ready, it's been kicked around since 1988. And this is really absurd, and you have to ask why. And I think, again, a lot of it comes back to real estate interests and real estate developers and who's benefiting, private equity investors and funds. But I want to talk, I agree with my colleagues, there's so much more we need to do. We need to protect commercial rents. We need to make sure that the opportunity for lease renewals are there, and that's what the Small Business Jobs Act does. We also need to lift the commercial tax threshold, because we're overburdening our mom-and-pop shops again and again. But I want to say something about the mom-and-pop shops, because frankly, as I was walking up Second Avenue today, there was empty storefront after empty storefront. I mean, it was really shocking, to be honest with you. In the course of a six-block walk, I said, "I can't believe there's another one." But what's behind those storefronts? They are people that we rely on. They were our friends. They were community members. They knew our name. We knew them. That's what makes a community personal. So every time we lose a mom-and-pop shop, we lose dear community members, and we have to do better than that. They invested five, 10 years, blood, sweat, and tears in our neighborhoods, and we owe them that opportunity for at least to sit down at the table for a lease renewal.
Yes, I support the Small Business Jobs Survival Act, and let me tell you why. My grandfather, as I mentioned earlier, came here and opened up a bodega. And as a kid, he would tell me, like, "Raffi, you're a great businessman. You kept moving and opening up new stores." And he was like, "I didn't want to do that. I kept getting kicked out. The rent kept going so high."
Yeah.
Right? And that's the reality. When I walk into Starbucks, no one says, "Hey, Jorge, how are you? How's your mother? How's your niece?" Right? No one says that. The bodegas do, though. The stores know who your relatives are. They know what schools your kids attend. They're the eyes and ears of our community. They're the ones who employ us. They're the ones who support our events. And for us not to tell them, "You have the right to have lease renewal?" Of course they do. Let's make it happen. How do we make it happen? Is having rooms filled with individuals like you to tell the stories of how important these stores are to you, how important they are to the community. And with regards to the special district, time is up. I support a special district as I walk with the microphone. And I think we need to think about what we consider as a chain store. So for example, you know, we are losing that Israel, Mount Sinai, we're losing hospitals. Are we going to include Dwayne Reed that might come in with a physician assistant and a doctor as a chain store? Are we going to say that a seasonal tax preparer is a chain store? We need to tweak it.
So this is the last question for community access. In addition to housing, we also have a small advocacy department, and we've been working to help get better training of the police when they encounter people in emotional distress. What are your views on the interaction of mental health recipients and the police? And what effort could you take to support the extension of training of police to deescalate the encounter between police and mental health recipients when they're in crisis?
I'm actually honored to be the first person to answer this question, because it hits home. It hits home because it's really at the core about community policing and what do we do about the way our police officers who put their lives at risk are protecting us and looking at us? The reality is, when I walk outside, no police officer is going to mistake me for an attorney. And that's just the reality, right? But with our mental health, our institutions with mental health, it's important that we have training. We need social workers within the precincts. We need counseling within the precincts. We need to make sure that our police officers have recording mechanisms so that we can view it objectively and see that interaction. It's important. The backdrop of our community is how we engage with one another, and that also includes police interaction. We certainly need to train our police officers, but we also need to make sure that our community has the resources to interact back with them, and that includes making sure we have facilities that support individuals who may have mental disabilities.
So I agree with Jorge that community policing, excuse me, is really critical. And I know that there are a number of states, Connecticut being one of them, where it is by law now, there must be training for the use of force, training for cultural sensitivity, training for interactions with those with mental health disabilities. That's the kind of laws that we need on the books here in New York City and in New York State. And frankly, I support body cams. I think when police are wearing body cams, their interactions are different, different on both sides of the exchange. And certainly, the police department themselves support it. There's a highway program going on right now. The more we shed sunlight onto any situation, the better. And frankly, I can't think of a more vulnerable population than those suffering from mental health. We need to do so much more, and certainly, the police department needs the training to deescalate those situations that have turned into tragedy in the last couple of months in particular.
So, yes, we brought two very, very important things, mental health and of course criminal justice reform in a way. So for me, I always bring up criminal justice reform. I think it is so incredibly important. We are one of the most progressive cities in the nation, and we still have a lot of problems with community and police relationships. So when it comes to mental health or disability, these are things that aren't necessarily visible. So we need to make sure that our NYPD, of course, is trained to recognize that not every mental health issue or disability issue is visible. So it has to be culturally sensitive. We need more transparency within the NYPD. But we also need to think about how our populations are treated even inside of some of these facilities, including places like Wipers Island. So really, how are we looking at solitary confinement and using it on the disability committee and the LGBTQ community, but also speedy travel, bail reform, ending broken windows? And then also going super local and making sure that something like the NYPD, the Neighborhood Coordination Officer Program, making sure that that's something that people know about. They're trying to bring back the modern beefhop and get people to know their communities. So that person who walks around, maybe necessarily takes certain walks, they know, okay, you know, that's right, right? Goes around, takes his walks, we know him, he's not a danger to anyone. And really making sure that we improve those relationships and that they know where they are, they know their communities.
So mental health is a really important issue for me, and I can't talk about it enough. And, you know, I'll go many of the things we talked about. We need to end broken windows, and also, like, this quota system. Folks who, you know, police officers who have to hit a certain number, and they're looking for any excuse to find someone who may not have the facilities there and makes them an easy target. There's all kinds of issues that we need to tackle that comes in police reform. I think that's one of them, and I think broken windows. And Ronnie is right, there are folks who, they may mistake me as a boy. I'm not. There is a certain privilege that they may must have that is unfair, and we need to break that whole thing up, and it needs to stop. And New York City needs to be the one that leads the country on how to community police, how to have a relationship that everyone live in a safe place, it's fair and full of opportunity.
So, be my final question from the Historic Preservation Council. The original question was, would you all rally behind community efforts for historic preservation? I think you all made that very clear, so I'd like to attack that a little bit more. Part of what we do is, we don't prefer campus in neighborhoods. We let neighborhood groups come to us and say, "Our neighborhood's being torn apart, and we really want to protect it." And in New York City, one way to really do that is land marketing. That is the only tool we have. We can tinker with zoning, but land marketing is the only tool we have. So what often happens is that we get told now, and we ask, "Why?" And the agency says, "Because." And that's really what we get. So how can you, as council members, rally behind these efforts, make the agency accountable and transparent, so that we get real answers? Because we all know that the chair is appointed by the mayor.
So just a follow-up question to that, just so I'm clear. So when the agency says, "Because," what's the next process? Why does the answer end there?
Because, so the official process is a request for evaluation, but a request for evaluation is simply a request. It's not the genesis of any official process. So the agency has to respond to any requests within 30 days by law. So they acknowledge our request, and then that's it. And usually, the answer is either no, or this sounds interesting, but it's not within the, you have to evaluate our priorities in the context of them. And this is what every single one of my groups gets told. And then we count them, and we count them, and yours, no, why? Nothing.
I don't know how you respond. Like, how is that a way to do business? That is their job, to process these things and give people reasons why they're being denied, what's happening with them. It's not acceptable. I think it's very obvious. But I don't understand what other important mechanism, who would be on the hook for saying, "No, figure this out." They deserve a response. They deserve an explanation. They deserve to understand why these things are just kind of hating in purgatory. If that's the city council member's responsibility, then you've not been served very well.
But how can the council make the agency give us answers? Because we have council members that are right behind us, but they can't even get us an answer when the chair and the council, they won't have the mayor in office.
I have to say, I think that, I think, relationship needs to be revalued. Folks are too close to these issues. That person and the mayor cannot be in collusion in the way that it seems like they are. I think we need, as a city council, to use every arrow that we're equipped, whether it's hearings, or subpoenas, or whatever it is, let's make some noise around here. Let's demand why these are not getting through, and why your work is not making it in the light of day, people are not able to preserve our communities. I'm just baffled by that this continues to happen, and I just don't think you can expect anything to change. We need some of the same people and have the same approach year in and year out. So thank you for bringing that to my attention. I wasn't aware of just how severe and horrible that process is. It needs to change.
Yes, so there's a couple of things that happen inside of City Hall that really don't take into account any of the community concerns or any of our requests for that matter. So absolutely, I think that one of the things that we should be allowed to do is, well, the city council should be able to have more power in terms of who are assigned to these regulatory bodies. Of course, two of our major responsibilities is oversight and investigation, but as you pointed out, the mayor gets to assign a lot of these people. I think for the city council to have voting, really strong voting rights on being able to say, "No, this is not the person that is going to be the chair of this body," because they really just don't have our same beliefs and values. They, we're not aligned. So it goes with the speaker, too. The speaker puts who's the chair of his committees. The speaker puts which council members are on which committees. So you really are kind of at the mercy of whoever is chosen amongst the body. The other issue is when it comes to legislation. If you have, unfortunately, having a majority, having 50% plus one of co-sponsors on a bill does not automatically trigger a hearing and a vote. I think that needs to change. I think we need to put a speaker of the city council who's more democratic and who understands that we really need to take all of these concerns into work.
So this is my going to hear you talk about the process, and here's a great idea. Let's revamp the process. It clearly is not working the way it is, and, you know, you have to also try to shed some light on it. I know that one of the great things that has happened recently is the Open Government Court, where you can actually get all kinds of government information from all kinds of agencies, department of buildings, up and down the rung. And I'd love to see Landmark's Preservation Commission process really opened up to the public. You know, this is just absurd. The message that we're getting is that history doesn't matter to a Landmark's Preservation Commission. That's absurd. That, to me, is a total oxymoron. If Landmark's Preservation doesn't care about history, what is it that they care about? And who are they answering to? So I'd love to buy you a cup of coffee and find out what the hell is really going on here, because this is the craziest thing that I've ever heard. And frankly, we wonder why our neighborhoods are being destroyed. Those who are in a place to make a difference are not embracing their own role and making sure that knowledgeable people who are making the case for historic preservation are getting the hearing they deserve and the scrutinization that's warranted. It just seems awfully willy-nilly to me, and that's completely outrageous. So thank you for the work that you do. You are the most patient people I've ever met in my life.
So when a city agency tells you no, the next remedy would be to file an Article 78 in court. And that Article 78 in court would force the city agency to come into the Supreme Court and explain to a judge why. That's what you want. You want something in writing that says, "Why." There's something directly that we could do in city council to get that why. We're supporting legal service providers. Remember, if you probably remember when we had MFY, Mobilization for Youth, right? Those were the first attorneys out of that. It was great. Now they're Mobilization for Justice. And they have a Community Economic Development Program. So does Legal Services in New York City, and I'll be happy to put you in contact with them, because we need a group of attorneys who are going to hold the city accountable. And we need to make sure we're building our allies, and that's what's going to get the job done, because we need to file these Articles 78s. We need a judge to tell the city, "You're not following your own rules. How is this building developed and built by the same architect not preserved where this other one is?" It's unacceptable. And the way that we do it is fund organizations that support and that deliver on providing Article 78 representation. Thank you.
I'm just going to have one of our board members, Harriet Putterman, get up and ask, I think, was the final question that we have on community land trust. So Harriet, could you come up and do that? And then afterwards, I'm sure, if you stay a little while longer, we'll talk to you about the issue.
Steve, you promised a glass of water. I recommend the audience, too. As interested as we are in candidates, we're also interested in sufferers. So community land trust, as hopefully we all know, just to explain, is one of the cutting-edge ways of assuring that whatever's built above it remains low in house. Community groups, not the property, on the land underneath the facility in order that it remain low in house. So there are a handful of city-owned properties.
So, and with city-owned properties remaining in Council District Two. Do you support them being sold to community land for to be preserved as affordable housing? And will you make it clear to HPD that you will not support the sale of city-owned land unless the sites are earmarked permanently for affordable housing, targeted to low or very low income households with a community land trust?
Not only do I support it, I say we need more funding. $1.69 million from HPD isn't enough, it's just not. We know that we have NYCHA, and we have the biggest NYCHA complex within New York City in our district. We know that we have unused land. Why aren't we using community land trusts to develop on that land? That's a reality, that's what we need to do. We need to support our community land trust, especially if we're trying to preserve the fabric and bedrock of what makes District Two so diverse, a place where anyone from any wok of flight has an opportunity to have their life here and contribute to this great district. And that starts with preserving our brands, that starts with affordability, and I'm glad that we finally have community land trust that's getting attention. I mean, this community land trust is the oldest community land trust in New York City, certainly, and certainly a model, but we need to tell HPD enough is enough, we need more funding, and we need to hold our city accountable with regards to the property on NYCHA and say, "This property needs to be developed, and it should be developed either by NYCHA or through community land trusts." Thank you.
So New York City has become a land for foreign investors, I think that's pretty clear with all of the luxury high rises. And not unlike London and Hong Kong, this is where people are planting their cash. I mean, this is money laundering in big glass buildings. So frankly, we have very little land left. I think it's fair to say that most of us who live here now are here because we've been living here for 25 years. Young people don't have the opportunity to stay here and, you know, live their individualized built families. So I agree with Jorge in terms of the privatization of city-owned land, and I'm particularly concerned about next-gen NYCHA, where we should be making sure that we're not privatizing that very, very rare space and that we're building supportive housing on that space and not allowing developers to lease the land for 100 years that, for all intents and purposes, is selling it and making it useless to the rest of us.
Thank you, thank you, Harriet, and thank you for all the work on Hoover Square, it's really, you know, we are a community land trust that is really led by Hoover Square Committee and the great work that they've done, and this has actually been a model for other parts of the city, including East Harlem. So for finally, the mayor and leadership and administration to recognize how important this is for true permanent affordability is a really big deal. So we have to keep pushing, we have to keep moving forward. You know, hopefully, as soon as I get into office, what I'd like to do is really identify the vacant land and make sure that we are using that space and put into community land trusts, and to make sure that it is as close to 100% affordable, and that includes supportive housing, and that includes senior housing as well. So I truly believe in this model, I think it's incredible, it was born at a time where speculators were coming into this neighborhood, and now, right now, every square inch of our land is under speculation. And this is our land, this is public-owned land, it should be for public good, and it should be as close to 100% affordable housing, has to be supported, has to be for seniors, and we have to expand the CLT model.
Yes, community land trust works. We need to do our best to protect it and expand it in every opportunity we have. I want also, you haven't really talked much about demanding more from our developers, 80/20 buildings, that kind of thing. Why is that somehow, that was held up as like a victory? That's like, we need to ask more and demand more from our developers. If you want to use the crux of this land we have in our neighborhood, we're not making more of it, we need to make more of it. So we need to make sure that our developers are investing, they've got more skin in the game, and they've got, you know, their profit margins, you know? Is it okay for them to have a 40% profit margin versus a 60% profit margin? Is that too much to ask? It's not about economics here, like, there's a moral issue. It's an appeal that are hard to morality, do you actually care about people? Do you actually care about New Yorkers? And I'm committed to be the council member who will make sure that they are held accountable and they're held responsible for what is immoral practice, like pushing hardworking people out of their homes. Is this the kind of city we are? Are we, is this who we are? It's not, it is not, and it needs to stop. And I want your support as a city council member, so we can finally bring that to bear.
Okay, so that's the end of our questions here tonight. Of course, we have many other questions that probably weren't asked, or didn't have time to ask, because it's almost nine o'clock. But I do want to thank our candidates for coming tonight.